Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Christopher I and Ella Chamber. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am City Council President Pro Tem Cory. Today is September 15, 2021. Welcome to the Boston City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll to ascertain the presence of a court?
Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Bock.
President.
Counselor Braden.
President.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Counselor.
Counselor Asabi George.
President.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Mahia. Counselor O'Malley.
President.
And Counselor Wu.
President.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind, Counselor Wu would like to invite you to deliver the invocation.
My pleasure. Loving God, thank you for the gift of family and community, for the life and love we share. We ask you to make us aware of your presence during this time of transition. Help us to know that we are not alone in life's, excuse me, in life's comings and goings. Help us to accept change as an opportunity to grow in our trust and understanding of each other and you. Help us to refocus on who we are and what we are about. Remind us that change can bring new energy, new life, and a recommitment to all that we hold sacred. Grant us the security of knowing we rest in the faithfulness of your care. May this period of transition be a time of transformation, allowing us to become all we can be. I pray that you will bless the members of the Boston City Council as they deliberate their work, the future of Boston and its people. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those inspiring words. Counselor Wu would now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to, please stand. Counselor Wu?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance report to indicate that Counselor Campbell has joined us? Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Now moving on to the first order of the business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the Chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Moving on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0953?
Certainly. Docket 0953, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $25 million in the form of a grant for the Commonwealth Builder Program awarded by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund the creation of workforce homeownership housing units and the long-term availability of those units to eligible moderate-income households.
Thank you. Docket 0953 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0954?
Thank you. Docket 0954, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the FY22 Public Safety Answering Point Support and Incentive Grant awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0954 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Docket 0955?
Docket 0955, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the Alston-Brighton Homeowner Fund awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund programming to foster affordable homeownership and homeowner stability in Alston-Brighton.
And docket 0955 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Next up, docket 0956?
Docket 0956, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $399,418.73 in the form of a grant for the FY22 911 Training Grant awarded by the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunication staff.
Thank you. Docket 0956 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Docket 0957?
Docket 0957, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $254,194 in the form of a grant for the Challenge Grant awarded by William T. Grant Foundation, passed through Northeastern University, to be administered by the Department of Youth and Employment. The grant will fund research by Northeastern University Ducaca Center for urban and regional policy that inform the design of a more inclusive workforce development system for the youth of Boston.
Thank you. Docket 0957 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Workforce Development. Docket 0958?
Docket 0958, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the No Kid Hungry awarded by Share Our Strength to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund school-based programs, BOSS Food Love, and the Community Hub Schools Initiative.
Thank you. Docket 0958 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Up next, docket 0959?
Docket 0959, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount, excuse me, of $44,647 in the form of a grant for the FY20 CARES Act of Supplemental Operating Funds awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, passed through the Boston Housing Authority to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund food box preparation and delivery services to eight BHA housing sites.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the Chair now recognizes Counselor Michael Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Chair Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to move for suspension of rules and passage. This is a $44,647 grant for the Fiscal Year 20 CARES Act Supplemental Operating Funds. The grant funding will be used to support the work of the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund food box preparation and delivery services to eight BHA sites. The grant was awarded to us by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that passed through the BHA, and they're administered by the Office of Food Access. So as Chair of COVID-19 Recovery Committee, I'd like to suspend and pass these funds so they can be used expeditiously for those that are in dire need of food access. Appreciate everyone's willingness to move for suspension and passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Michael Flaherty, Chair of Boston's COVID-19 Recovery Committee, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0959. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to docket 0960.
Docket 0960, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $32,500 in the form of a grant for a policy fellowship awarded by the University of Massachusetts to be administered by the Office of Equity. The grant will fund a research fellow who will assist in tracking a diverse portfolio of policy issues and benchmarking policy trends nationally.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Anisa Asabi George, Chair of the Committee on Education. Chair Asabi George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you can see in this docket, it is for $32,500. It's a grant. It will fund this particular fellowship program. I request that we suspend and pass this docket.
Thank you very much. Counselor Anisa Asabi George, Chair of the Committee on Education, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0960. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0960 has passed. Madam Clerk, up next is docket 0961.
Docket 0961, message and order authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,000 in the form of a grant for the Youth Poet Laureate Program awarded by donor groups to be administered by the Arts and Culture. The grant will fund and support the publication of the next Youth Poet Laureate book.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events. Chair Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also suspend and pass this so we can accept just $1,000.
There you go. Thank you. Counselor Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0961. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Madam Clerk, we're now moving on to reports of public officers and others. Would you please read docket 0962 and 0963 together?
Certainly. Docket 0962, notices you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Allison Rosisius as Commissioner of Environment Department effective August 2, 2021. And docket number 0963, notices you see from the city clerk, in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of August 18, 2021.
Thank you. Dockets 0962 and 0963 shall be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0964?
Docket 0964, the constable bonds of Samuel DeSrozier has been duly approved and received by the Collector Treasurer.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Seeking approval of this under the usual terms and conditions. This is docket 0964.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks approval of docket 0964 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Next, please read docket 0965.
Docket 0965, notices you see from the acting mayor of the appointment of Jasmine Nguyen as the Project Manager for the Boston Canvas Board effective September 20, 2021.
Thank you. Docket 0965 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0549?
Docket 0549, the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events, to which is referred on April 14, 2021, docket number 0549, in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $2,051,903 in the form of a grant for the Boston Cultural Fund awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund cultural spaces, organizations, programs, artists, and activities in the South End with the goal of preserving and enhancing cultural activity. Submits a report recommending the committee report ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Frank Baker, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events. Counselor Baker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. A hearing was held on Thursday, September 9, on docket 0549, and a message authorizing City of Boston to accept and expand the amount of $2,051,903. The matter was sponsored by Mayor Kim Janey and referred to the committee on April 14, 2021. Chief Kara Elliott Ortega and Director of Policy and Planning for the mayor's office was there. Nadia Faraya, Director of Administration and Finance from the Office of Arts and Culture, was there and gave the committee an update on the arts and cultural programs and the city overview of how these funds will be used. These funds are the result of a zoning code which requires the creation and support of affordable spaces for quality art and cultural uses. So listen up, district councilors. The code also has a provision for contribution in lieu of providing a physical space, which this is here. Chief Ortega explained the BPDA is expected to receive a certain contribution of funds generated as a result of the Section 29 of Article 64 of the Boston Zoning Code. Projects proposed within planned development areas in the South End Neighborhood District of Boston that incorporates non-residential uses are required to provide affordable cultural spaces as defined in Section 64-21.2 of the code. Under Section 29 BNC, a proposed project may provide a portion of affordable cultural space as a contribution equivalent to 5% of the total gross floor area allocated to non-residential uses and to any and all proposed projects within an approved planned development area. Above that, allowed as of right in the underlying zoning sub-district. In layman's term, 5% of this project was a 10,000-square-foot space, of which 4,000 will be on-site, and the other 2 million will be able to stay with the project so we can do, the groups can do programming in art uses and spaces in there and the surrounding area. So I viewed it as a good thing. The grant will fund cultural spaces, organizations, programs, artists, and activities in the South End with the goal of preserving and enhancing cultural activities. As Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full city council for discussion and formal action. At this time, my recommendation is to pass docket 0549. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are women around here lately?
Counselor Baker, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Tourism, and Special Events, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0549, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0353?
Docket 0353, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on February 24, 2021, docket number 0353. Communication was received from Anita Taviras, Chair of the Board of Elections, for your approval. A citizen's petition entitled "Petition for Eversource Substation in East Boston," submits a report recommending that the petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, as well as the District Council from East Boston. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This docket is about a non-binding question that will be placed before the voters if we vote on it today as a body. This docket was actually created by 10 people in East Boston who came forward and presented the question properly before the Elections Department. That Elections Department then had us have a hearing on it, and I conducted the hearing with a question at the time that read, excuse me, trying to find the question. Do you support relocating an Eversource electric substation now proposed at 400 Condor Street, East Boston, away from nearby homes, parks, and flood risks in East Boston to an alternate secure location such as within Logan Airport? Now ultimately, after the hearing, we decided that the question was a little bit confusing in a lot of conditions. So the hearing then produced an amended question which reads as follow, which I hope that my colleagues will vote to allow for the people of Boston to consider. Should a high-voltage electric substation be built at 400 Condor Street in East Boston along the Chelsea Creek near homes, parks, playgrounds, jet fuel storage, and a flood risk area rather than an alternate safe nearby location such as a non-residential mass portland at Logan Airport? We took Eversource out of it and really wanted to go to the concept for whether this should be located in any neighborhood so that the City of Boston can decide and make a moral statement as to whether we should be building that kind of infrastructure in those kinds of locations. So ultimately, I'm suggesting or asking that my colleagues vote that this question be approved in the amended version, and it would be placed on the ballot for November 2 for the people of Boston to do, in a non-binding way, vote as to whether this is infrastructure that they would like to see continuing in the City of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0353 in a new draft. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is, has been passed. Congratulations, Counsel Edwards. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0481?
Docket 0481, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on March 1, 2021, docket number 0481. Ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Section 5-5.20, pay parental leave for the City of Boston employees. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, you have the floor.
First, I want to thank my cosponsors, Counselor Michelle Wu and Counselor Anisa Asabi George, for their support in upgrading our parental leave policies. This upgrade is essentially allowing for loss of pregnancy to be part of the reasons that any potential parent can also request leave from the City of Boston. It is a suggestion of compassion. It is a suggestion of acknowledging that many people on this path have encountered difficulties, and it's an acknowledgement in modernizing our parental leave laws. Now, we had a robust hearing about this, where we realized many of the regulations that support this also need to be updated, that the language is entirely gendered. It's also oftentimes based off on whether you're married to your partner, and those things are no, we found to be no longer relevant and not really reflective of the diversity of the parents that we have in the City of Boston. So we did make several suggestions to the Human Rights Commission, excuse me, to the HR Department of the City of Boston. But today is about the specific language on the ordinance, and there are some changes, including loss of pregnancy as a reason, and also upgrading it to the 12 weeks, making it consistent with what the administration had already done. I also want to thank you, Counsel O'Malley, in helping me and my vision and my heart to be opened up to the impact on a lot of our male parents who are impacted by also loss of pregnancy. I think your testimony was by far one of the most powerful that day, along, of course, with Counselor Asabi George and Counselor Michelle Wu's, and also Counselor Julie Mahia, in talking about their pathways to becoming parents and why this is so necessary to be open to all pathways and all forms of parenting. So I hope that you will, my colleagues will vote to pass this amendment, and that is all. Thank you. I don't know if my cosponsors have any.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Edwards. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0481, Counselor Lydia Edwards, in concert with Counselor Michelle Wu and Counselor Anisa Asabi George, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0481. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Congratulations, all. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0773?
Docket 0773, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on June 16, 2021, docket number 0773, an ordinance creating a commission on black men and boys. Submits a report recommending the order ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, who's the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the lead sponsor of this commission, Counselor at Large Julie Mahia, for her leadership and pushing to make sure this conversation happened. This, as we know, this body voted for this commission in 2014 and passed this already. And so what Counselor Mahia did, and listening to the community, is she upgraded this commission and made sure that we had a working session and a hearing, or actually just a working session specifically on the language. There were some amendments looking at the organization and duties as well, and also making sure that LGBTQ members were involved in the commission and also recognized as their own pathway as part of the black men and the Commission on Black Men and Boys. It's very exciting to see us again, to create history and to push this forward, to make sure that the vital conversations about how the city moves in any community, but especially when dealing with black men and boys, is at the table front and center. So I am moving for this amended version to be passed by the committee or by my colleagues. I don't know if the lead sponsor has any comments.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Mahia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Edwards for chairing our hearing on this ordinance, and more importantly, for the commitment of moving it along as quickly as you did. So thank you for that. The work to create a commission on black men and boys in Boston started seven years ago. And for context, it predated President Obama's My Brother's Keeper Initiative. It passed the council in 2014 unanimously before being vetoed by Mayor Walsh. But the need for this commission has not gone away since it's been vetoed. Back in 2014, since then, we have continued to see disproportionately impact of black men and boys in all sectors, from education to health and wellness, to economic empowerment to violence. The need for this commission never went away, and neither did the advocates who have been pushing for this ordinance. Tito Jackson, Counselor, former Counselor Tito Jackson, Ron Bell, Thaddeus Miles, Corey Thomas, Conan Harris, James Mackey, Bishop Dickerson, Matthew Parker, Lee Naves, Jason Boyd, just to name a few. You all have paved the way for this moment, and on behalf of the Boston City Council, I thank you for your commitment to this project and making space for our black men and boys. I want to take, I want to talk a little bit about the process and how we got here, because it's always paved in lots of zigzags. In June of this year, we introduced this ordinance after seven years of no council action. Here we are, three months later, and we are prepared to pass it today. It looks like when we meet the moment and answer the call to action, we all rise to that occasion. This ordinance is essentially the same thing that the council passed in 2014 with only a few key changes. First, we made revisions based on Mayor Walsh's veto back in 2014 to ensure that this ordinance is in compliance with our city charter. Second, we have given the commission the ability to hold community conversations on topics that impact black men and boys. We spoke with the community and came to the agreement that this ordinance is doing everything possible to impact change on behalf of black men and boys in the city. We have the opportunity to make history. This ordinance matters because black men and boys matter. We have an obligation to step into the space and let people in, and create space for people to step into their power. And let those, as our colleague, Congresswoman now Ayanna Pressley says, the people closest to the pain should be the people closest to the power. Thank you again to the advocates for getting us to this point, and I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this ordinance today.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on docket 0773? Seeing none, Counselor Lydia Edwards is Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, as well as Counselor Julia Mahia, as the lead sponsor, seek acceptance of this committee report and passage of docket 0773 in a new draft, passage in a new draft. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the docket is passed. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0896?
Docket 0896, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on August 18, 2021, docket number 0896. Communication was received from Anita Taviras, Chair of the Board of Elections, for your approval. A citizen's petition entitled "An Elected Boston School Committee for the Placement of a Local Non-Binding Public Opinion Advisory Question on the Ballot of the Next Regular Municipal Election on November 2, 2021." Submits a report recommending the petition ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Chair Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. The committee had an excellent hearing about this specific question. This would be a non-binding question put to the people of Boston again on November to essentially ask their thoughts or their opinions, if you will, about whether we should have an elected school committee. The question reads as following. Should the current-appointed school committee structure be changed to a school committee elected by the residents of Boston? I want to thank the residents of Boston, who actually brought this to our attention and for their reason, many of whom are here today. We are having this vote now. They came forward, they did the citizen petition, and then properly filed that with the Elections Department. The Elections Department certified them, it's properly before our body. We had a hearing and discussed this as well. During that hearing, I could say honestly, majority of our colleagues supported at least allowing the people of Boston to have an opinion about that, about this topic. So I also want to thank Counselor Ricardo Arroyo also. I believe he's been part of this movement and has a home rule petition that we'll also will be discussing later on this year. So, and of course, want to thank the Elections Department. I just want to give a shout-out to them. I know a lot of people had been concerned about results and so on and so forth. a lot of people had been concerned about results and so on and so forth. I want to acknowledge they're the hardest-working department, especially now, and as while we have a lot of cameras on them and a lot of pressure on them, I do want to acknowledge, and I think they deserve a round of applause, for all the work that they are doing for Including quickly turning around these ballot questions. We will now have three ballot questions on the November 1st, excuse me.[626.04][626.04][laughing] Sorry about that. Sorry. On the November 2 election. One is binding as a charter amendment. We have now, after your vote, the East Boston Substation, and if you vote for this, we will have the elected school committee question as well. I recommend you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. Any further discussion on Docket 0896? The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Royal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I just want to acknowledge again, the Elections Department certainly has had a long night, and they've had many over the course of the last couple of years. So, their work, but also, some of the folks who were behind making this happen are here today, and so I wanted to thank them for taking this monumental step. The question about what we do with our Boston Public Schools has, Boston School Committee specifically, has been a question since the right to elect our members was taken, and to see that put to a vote to the citizens and residents of Boston is going to be a big deal to get an idea of where and what they'd like to see the future of their schools be. I think, and we're now nearing almost 20 years of this, is more than enough time for the city to have a real analysis or a frank opinion on where, how we should move forward. And so, as this moves forward, I just want the city and the residents to know that that home rule petition that has been placed before this body is a template, is something that will be fed by both the members of this council, but also informed by what voters decide to do and how they add their voice to this. And again, thank you to the council for passing this, and thank you, well, hopefully, for hopefully passing this, and to the residents of Boston who took it upon themselves to bring this moment forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Royal. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Dorchester. Counselor Julian Mahia.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I also would just kind of like echo Counselor Arroyo's point in terms of how important it is to really seize this moment, to acknowledge the power of the people, and really what it looks like when we are led by those who are living the realities and doing the work. So, I just really want to like emphasize and underscore the importance of really honoring who it is that we're here to work for and on behalf of, and doing so in ways that encourages us to sometimes, it's important for us to step to the side and let others lead. And so, that is what these residents are doing, is holding us to task to that work, and so incredibly grateful for their leadership in this space, and I'm looking forward to a favorable response and a yes vote, so that we can let the people do the people's work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Dorchester. Counselor Savi George, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I do want to just say very clearly first that although I do not support an elected Boston School Committee, I think that this is a really important referendum, and it's of course, non-binding. So, it creates an added level of community discussion, of public discussion around this very specific question. So, I look forward to participating in this opportunity to discuss the governance structure of the Boston School Committee in greater detail with the public. Look forward to its hopeful passage today, because I think it's an important question to put before the people of Boston, and just grateful to the makers for this effort, certainly the leadership of our city's residents who have put this before us and the work of the Chair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Savi George. Any further discussion on Docket 0896? Seeing none, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket 0896. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Now, moving on to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0775?
Certainly. Docket 0775, Counselor O'Malley offer the following ordinance, amending the City of Boston Code, Ordinance, Chapter 7, Section 7-2.1 and 7-2.2, Building, Energy, Reporting, and Disclosure, Burdo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I think I'm going to be turning it over shortly to you, but I do want to just quickly give a quick summary of the actions we've taken so far. We had a very successful, robust hearing on this, and we had two working sessions thus far. The first working session went literally line by line to essentially pull, I think, any leftover questions or acknowledge any changes that had happened. I do want to thank Allison Bresias and, of course, the Chair of Environment and Open Space, Counselor O'Malley, for your incredible leadership and preparation for 21-page ordinance to come through and have, and I think one of the best conversations we've had about how we're going to essentially provide for a future for our children. The Burdo legislation essentially is about building emissions reduction and assuring that as we build, we're building for an actual future we can all live in. And so, I wanted to thank again also Chief Mariama White-Hammon, Program Manager Hannah Payne, and as I mentioned, Commissioner Allison Bresias, who were from the administration. I want to thank all of my colleagues, who I think at one point either attended the hearing or one of the working sessions, to make sure that we were steadfast in our commitment to make sure that the, let Burdo 2.0, as is aptly called, will happen this year. So, I, at this point, am going to ask that the matter stay in committee per the request of the lead sponsor, and make sure that we finish the conversations and any leftover ideas, concerns, and make sure that we have the consensus that we need to pass this as soon as the lead sponsor is ready. I turn it over to you now, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perfectly said. We'll be calling this for a vote in relatively short order, but did want to appreciate your incredible partnership on this. This is something that will be one of the most impactful things we can do as a body, and I'm really excited about it. So, thank you for that. Docket 0775 shall remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Now, moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0966?
Certainly. Docket 0966, Counselor Bach offer the following order for hearing to discuss city protocols for providing public records.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counselor Kenzie Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may remember, when we were last together, I introduced a 17F, which with the support of this body, went to the administration around public records requests that have come in and sort of where we are on answering them. I'm grateful to the administration for providing information partially responsive to that request. And in going through that, and then in communications that I received from other members of the public and members of the press who have been seeking public records, it became apparent that I think we have a problem with our protocol, a kind of a macro level. So, over the course of the summer, there were a series of findings actually by the state supervisor of records against us for records that we had held too long, but it doesn't seem as though that triggers something in our system to like really force the divulge of them if you've got a department that's sitting on them. And unfortunately, that issue won't be addressed by additional staff in the public records office, because it has to do with the actual mechanism by which we make the decision to get these things out. And so, having seen all of that, I think it probably makes sense for this body to have a hearing and think through what we can do, not just in terms of staffing, but in terms of protocols, to support our public records office and make sure that the city is a transparent and accountable place. So, that's the spirit of the hearing order, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bach. Is there anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia. Please add the Chair's name, as well as Counselor Wu. In Docket 0966 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. I'd like to, before we move on to Docket 0967, I'd like to invite Counselor Edwards to take the dais. So, stand by.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0967?
Certainly. Docket 0967, Counselors O'Malley and Campbell offer the following order regarding civilian review board nominations.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. On July 21 of this year, Counselor Andrea Campbell and I announced the procedure for our civilian review board nominations. As you know, we passed this incredible work from Chair Campbell, as well as Counselors Arroyo and Mahia, and the mechanism begins with the council president or the council itself submitting nominations to the mayor. So, working in concert with the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I think we've done as good a process as imaginable. We've created a portal where we are seeking applications. The end date is September 20, which is this upcoming Monday. We have a few more days until then, so please share with your networks the link to the application portal, which can be found on our website, boston.gov/city-council. Purpose of this order is to hold a working session to review the applications thus far received, of which we will then be submitting our nominations to the acting mayor. The mayor will appoint three members to the civilian review board from a pool of nine nominees who are submitted by us. These nominees will each serve a term of three years, provided, however, that of the members first appointed, three shall be appointed for a term of one year, three shall be appointed to a term of two years, and three shall be appointed to a term of three years. We've made available a paper copy of the application portal and have translated the application into Chinese, Cape Verdean Creole, Haitian Creole, Spanish, and Vietnamese. I want to thank again the incredible work of the Chair, as well as Counselors Arroyo and Mahia for their great partnership on this, and look forward to getting more applications in the next couple of days and then having a transparent and open process. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes, sorry.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Council President, for your leadership on this, and again, get this application out. It is a beautiful thing. It's a public process. It's incredible. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the matter? All right. Docket 0967 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Madam Chair, maybe counselors would wish to add their name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Any counselors who would wish to have their name added to the docket? I see Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, and Counselor Wu, and Counselor Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards, and we referred that, I believe, to public safety. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 0968?
Docket 0968, Counselors Arroyo and Mahia offer the following resolution recognizing September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counselor Royal, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since 1988, the United States has celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is a big deal because it recognizes the contributions of our Hispanic population. Many of our Latinx and Hispanic growth in the City of Boston has been a key part of Boston's prosperity and growth and putting us in a position where we are, the city we are today. And so, this is a fantastic time to recognize and honor those who contribute so much to our city and our state and our country. And so, I am honored to recognize September 15 to October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month here for the City of Boston. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Royal.
And also, sorry, and I also want to thank the cosponsor, Counselor Julie Mahia. It was a long night last night.
[laughing] Thank you. Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester. Counselor Julian Mahia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo for co-sponsoring this resolution. September 15 is an important day in the history of Hispanic people across the world. Today is the anniversary of Independence Day of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And between September 15 and October 15, we also celebrate the Independence Days of Mexico, Belize, and Chile. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to not only celebrate the accomplishments of our community, but to also commemorate the hard work and sacrifice of our ancestors to get us to where we are today. In Boston, our largest immigrant communities are Hispanic. There are thousands of businesses across the city who have been started by the Latino community, from barber shops to hair salons to restaurants and more. And let us not forget that this is the first time in our council's history that we have more than one Latino city counselor. So, just let that sink in. We're growing, y'all. We ain't going nowhere. But, while we celebrate Hispanic culture during this month, it's also important to use this time to better advocate for our community who need it most, from education to language access to economic empowerment. And I just wanted to underscore the fact that here in the City of Boston, we have over 130,000 Latinos. 130,000 Latinos live here in the City of Boston, and as someone who came to this country in the early 70s, I know how difficult it was for me to acclimate and be here as an immigrant who did not know how to speak English and had to learn how to do so watching Sesame Street. And so, I'm just incredibly grateful for the opportunity to celebrate the fact that we are here and to acknowledge the hard work that so many folks put in here in the City of Boston, just so that we can survive here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mahia. Would anyone else wish to speak on Docket 0968? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Savi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn. Please add the Chair's name, Counselor Wu. And counselors, I assume you want suspension of the rules and passage? Yes. So, counselors, Arroyo and Mahia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0968. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Congratulations, and thank you for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0969?
Docket 0969, Counselor Flynn offer the following resolution, celebrating Always Ask, Proud to Tell Day.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston. Counselor Ed Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, may I add Counselor Braden as an original cosponsor, please? She is hereby added. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over the last, over the last several weeks, I had the opportunity to speak directly with my friend who's the Veterans Commissioner, Rob Santiago, and he informed me about this important anniversary date, and we both thought it was appropriate for me to bring it forward to the public, to let them know about the 10th anniversary of the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell. So, this resolution that we're discussing today is a resolution to celebrate the day and to recognize our LGBTQ veterans and military families. That was the repeal of that policy. Between 93 and 2001, Don't Ask, Don't Tell was the official U.S. policy regarding the service of LGBTQ members in the military. It prohibited service members from sharing their sexual orientation, and commanding officers were not allowed to question military personnel about their sexual orientation. Although some saw this as an improvement on the outright ban of LGBTQ community from serving in the military, many people criticized this lack of full acceptance for military personnel. These veterans, these military personnel continued to be discharged during this period of time. Over 13,000 military personnel had been discharged for their sexual orientation. It also impacted their ability to get or to receive services from the Veterans Administration that they earned. Finally, in 2010, the Pentagon reevaluated the policy in a study which found that repealing the policy would pose little risk to military effectiveness. And President Obama signed the legislation, which came into effect on September 20, 2011. As I mentioned earlier, LGBTQ veterans and service members have made tremendous sacrifices in our country in order to serve, and they deserve to be treated with respect and dignity and be able to be who, and to be able to be who they are without fear. I have served with LGBTQ veterans, military members in the military before, and also their willingness to serve, sacrifice, and risk their lives for their loved ones and the country. And they deserve, as I mentioned, to be And they deserve, as I mentioned, to be treated with dignity and respect. So, I saw our military change over this period of time that I went in, in 1987, and I also saw our country change as well. And we still have a lot more work to do, but this was a good, this was a great policy that President Obama implemented in repealing Don't Ask, Don't Tell, so LGBTQ veterans, military personnel could serve openly without fear of being discharged from the military. So, thank you, Mr. President, for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about it. And I just wanted to highlight the tremendous work of my colleague, Councillor Braden, in support of our military veterans and the LGBTQ community as well, and also, as I mentioned earlier, the Veterans Commissioner, Rob Santiago, who does incredible work in this field also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councillor Flynn. The Chair now recognizes the District Councillor from Austin-Brighton, Councillor Liz Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am honored to join Councillor Flynn in this resolution today. Don't Ask, Don't Tell really forced people to hide who they were and didn't allow them to serve openly in their services without fear of repercussions. And if we go into the history of LGBT personnel in the military, all arms of the military over decades, there's a very shameful history of people not being able to be who they were, be recognized, and to serve openly, and to be really appreciated for their service, just as other straight service members were. You know, we go back into World War II, we know in our LGBT history, we know these stories. And I think it's really wonderful to just respect and appreciate their contribution, but also to celebrate the ending of that Don't Ask, Don't Tell era, and also to take a deep breath of sigh of relief that under this new administration, that we're continuing to move in the right direction, because we had a little blip on the road to progress as under the Trump administration. So, I'm really appreciative of this opportunity to recognize this milestone and hope that we can continue to move in an onward and upward direction towards full equality and appreciation of our LGBT service members.
Well said. Thank you, Councillor Braden. Would any other councillor wish to speak on docket 0969? Would any councillor wish to add their name? Madam Clerk, please add Councillor Arroyo, Councillor Baker, Councillor Bach, Councillor Campbell, Councillor Edwards, Councillor Savi George, Councillor Flaherty, Councillor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name, as well as Councillor Wu. And Councillors Flynn and Braden are seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0969. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you both, Councillors Flynn and Braden. Councillor Bach, for what reason do you wish to be acknowledged?
Just a motion for reconsideration, Mr. President, to add my name as a co-sponsor on docket 0967.
Okay. Madam Clerk, seeing no objection, Councillor Bach is hereby added as a co-sponsor to docket 0967. Thank you. We're now moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0970?
Certainly. Docket 0970, Councillor O'Malley for Councillor Bach.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0970. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Now, moving on to late files, I'm informed by the Clerk that there are two late-file matters. Both late-file matters have been sponsored by Councillor Edwards. One is an order for a hearing regarding the status of BPDA's plan, the East Boston Initiative, and the other is an ordinance creating voter participation through prepaid return envelopes for mail-in voting. All those in favor of adding the late-file matters into the record of the agenda, meaning we will then be able to take action, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Thank you. The late files have been added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you now please read the first and last clause or paragraphs of the first late-file matter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Offered by Councillor Lydia Edwards, an ordinance increasing voter participation through prepaid return envelopes for mail-in voting, whereas the 2020 state and federal election was the first time Massachusetts voters were able to vote by mail. Therefore, therefore be it that the city of Boston Code Ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 3, is hereby amended by adding the following. Section 2.3-4, prepared and prepaid envelopes for mail-in voting. Whenever the election sends mail-in ballots to voters, the returned envelopes shall be prepaid by the city of Boston, filed in the council on September 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the District Councillor from East Boston, Councillor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to add Councillor O'Malley and Councillor Flynn as co-sponsors and wave to 12.
Councillor Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and add the addition of both myself and Councillor Flynn as co-sponsors on this first late-file matter. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. We are hereby added. Thank you very much, Councillor Edwards.
Thank you very much. This is a one-sentence ordinance, and I, normally, you know, my process, I would like to have a robust conversation and hearing about this. However, we did speak with the Elections Department, and in order for this to be impactful for this election, we need this passed, and then the Elections Department then needs to go ahead and put out the invoice for the prepaid envelopes. What we found in the first round of the vote by mail is that people received the application. You could return the application, that was prepaid. Then you received the ballot back, and you had to pay for one, two stamps in order to return your vote back to the city of Boston. And there was, you know, Twitter was determining how much your postage was, and people were saying, put three, just to be sure. I had people knock on doors, and they were holding their ballot in the envelope and saying, so where do I go with this? And I don't have a stamp. Do you have a stamp? So, that should be completely removed. We should, if you're going to request, and the city is willing to prepay, excuse me, prepay for the application, then when you go to return your vote through the mail, the city should also prepay for that envelope as well. And so, I'm asking my colleagues to please, to vote for this onsite. It's one sentence, in order for it to be impactful for our next election coming up this year. So, I turn it over now to my co-sponsors.
Thank you, Councillor Edwards. Chair recognizes City Council President Madam O'Malley. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think you have to recognize one more. New system since the Flaherty turn at the day. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Feels like yesterday. Stuff didn't work back then either.
Very briefly, I wanted to thank my dear colleague and friend, Councillor Edwards, as well as Councillor Flynn, for their great partnership. And I wanted to echo the comments that several of you had made. I am incredibly proud of Commissioner Tavares and Registral Piomonte, who've done amazing work in an unbelievably challenging atmosphere. And I would say I'm proud of this body for pushing to make sure that we had early vote everywhere in the city, to make sure that we had vote by mail, no excuse absentee ballots that for some reason it shouldn't take a pandemic to change, but we did. And we're going to, I hope, continue to do this, but we want to make sure that we do this right. And something as simple as making sure that we have prepaid postage, so that there's not an inadvertent poll tax to try to get individuals to vote, we should do. I don't care what it costs, it is worth it. And let me also be clear, because there's been a lot of interest, and it did, many of us were up till very late last night waiting for the returns. I will happily take later returns if it means more access for voters and more opportunities for individuals to cast their vote, and that's precisely what we're trying to do here. So, this is a one-sentence ordinance. As we know, the Chair of the Government Operations Committee almost never allows for suspension of the rules. This is the one exception she is making, but I'm looking forward to getting this done and making sure that this is just another level that we can do. And Lord knows, there's a heck of a lot more we can be doing to make sure that we have stronger voter turnout. It was very low yesterday, and I'm confident that all of us will do everything we can to make sure that the access points to voting are as many as we can possibly dream of. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor O'Malley. Chair recognizes City Councillor Ed Flynn. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Flaherty, and thank you to Councillor Edwards and to Councillor O'Malley for this important, for this important hearing. I was at Mary Ellen McCormick several weeks ago, and that same situation that Councillor Edwards brought up when she was speaking, a woman said to me, how much is it to mail an envelope to the city of Boston Election Department? And I said, it would be two official stamps. And, you know, she didn't have the money. She didn't have the necessary money to mail it. The same situation happened again to an elderly woman in Chinatown. She also didn't have the money to mail her ballot in. So, what we're doing here is giving an opportunity for everybody to vote regardless of their income. So, I want to say thank you to Councillor Edwards and to Councillor O'Malley for their important work on this. But I also wanted to highlight that it's important as a body, as a city council body, that during budget season next year, that we effectively advocate for more money in the Election Department budget to deal with these types of situations as well. So, it's incumbent upon all of us to aggressively advocate for more funding for the Election Department so that they continue the great work, the great work that they are doing. Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. Thank you, Councillor Flynn. Is there anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Chair recognizes City Councillor Liz Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to echo the comments and observations of my colleagues. As I was standing at the polls yesterday, someone came up and expressed the very same issue to me, and it's very important for folks with disabilities who may have limited ability to get out of their home and go to the post office to buy a stamp and put it in the, put the ballot in the mailbox. So, I really feel this is a very important and necessary initiative, and I support it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councillor Braden. Chair recognizes City Councillor Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because it's, we're going for a vote today, so as a body, we should know how much it would cost. I mean, 30,000 ballots, a dollar. I would assume probably around $30,000. Where would that money come from? Through you, to the maker?
Question through the Chair to the maker. Chair recognizes City Councillor Lydia Edwards.
Thank you very much. If you want to have the exact invoice, not, but I can tell you a comparison. For the, for the charter amendment, per the state law, we are supposed to send out a copy to every single registered voter, residents in the city of Boston. And in that discussion, and Councillor O'Malley can attest to that, we spoke with the Elections Department, and that was going to cost about $150,000. That was going to everybody. That's a huge amount.
Yeah.
Right? This is only going to be to those who request it, so it's going to be less than $100,000.
And will it come from their budget, the Election Department's budget?
They would be, they would be paying for, I spoke with Sabinho Piomonte specifically about the process, and he said he would have to put it through in an invoice or so on and so forth.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Chair recognizes City Councillor Kenzie Bach.
I just wanted, as the Chair of Ways and Means to rise to the point that Councillor Baker raised, and just say, I think that because some of the funds related to our election activities and the expansion of them have also been, in various ways, eligible for the CARES and the ARPA funding and such, there is, my understanding is that for sure there is enough flexibility in the existing funds authorized by this body to make this happen without, without cutting any other crucial activities of the Elections Department. And also, I'll say that obviously, it not only only applies to those who are, who are using, who are asking for a ballot, but as I understand, really only when it's actually used that way, so that somebody who drops their ballot in a ballot box isn't going to cost the department anything. So, just, just wanted to say on the Ways and Means side that I think this is something we can fiscally responsibly do.
Very good. Thank you, Councillor Bach. Anyone else wishing to add their names? Madam Clerk, please add the name of City Councillor Ricardo Arroyo, Councillor Frank Baker, Councillor Kenzie Bach, Councillor Liz Braden, Councillor Andrea Campbell, Councillor Anissa Savi George, the Chair's name, Councillor Ed Flynn, Councillor Julie Mejia, and Councillor Michelle Wu. And I believe at this time, the lead sponsors, both Councillor Lydia Edwards and Councillor President Madam O'Malley, and there's a third Councillor, third sponsor, Councillor Ed Flynn, wish to move for suspension and passage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The Chair at this point, so the ayes have it. Chair recognizes City Councillor Juliette Mejia.
I have one more. In the LS, I don't think it's too long.
But you have the floor.
Yeah? Okay. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that as we think about this in terms of the postage, I just wanted to see if it would be an opportunity for us, maybe not this election, but in the future, Councillor Edwards, to also consider some of the challenges for folks who have fine motor skills. There are some folks who struggle with the command of the pencil at times, and so maybe we, as a city, can start thinking about how we can be more mindful of those who are struggling with disability issues in regards to being able to have their ballot casted. And I just wanted to say that this, I'm saying this on behalf of an advocate who just texted me. I'd like to just read what she wrote. She said, "Councillor Mejia, in regards to mail-in ballots, which is why it's so important for us to understand democracy, because we can bring the people's voices into these chambers." She says, "Consider those voters who have fine motor challenges, who have difficulty to fill out the oval circle and not go outside of the oval line. Would marking X be much easier with the coordination of that mobility issues?" I just want to raise that as something for us to consider as we start thinking about making it easy for everyone to be able to cast a ballot. Thank you. And her name is Linda Friedman, and she said this on behalf of her son Travis Friedman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mejia. The second late-file matter that's in the Clerk's hands, Madam Clerk, please read that docket from Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Offered by, oops, sorry. Offered by City Councillor Lydia Edwards, in order for a hearing regarding the status of the BPDA's plan for East Boston Initiative, whereas the neighborhood of East Boston has long-served as a beacon for immigrants, a cornerstone of the marine economy, and a portal to the world. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the status of the plan for East Boston Planning Initiative, and that neighborhood and civic groups, Boston Planning and Development Agency, and any other interested parties shall be invited to attend. This is then filed in the City Council on September 15th, 2021.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes the District Councillor from East Boston, Councillor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I think one of the first actions I took when I came into the, to the City Council was to call for a hearing in East Boston about planning for East Boston, while over a couple hundred people attended that hearing, and we discussed many issues in East Boston and how to come up with a true master plan that is reflective of the displacement crisis that we're in, while ironically, in the development boom that continues to go. We then set aside, and the administration, the Walsh administration, agreed to do Plan East Boston, and we began to move that over the time. And we discussed traffic congestion, climate readiness, and we discussed our history in promoting stability and also affordable rents, and making sure that we are continuing to be a vibrant, beautiful, diverse neighborhood that we love in East Boston. What was a little disappointing, actually very disappointing, is during the pandemic, Plan East Boston was paused, but development was not. And so, we got further and further away from goals of trying to make sure that we have that beautiful neighborhood that we are fighting for every single day. And so, this hearing order is to bring us back to the table, to figure out where we are in our planning, to understand the goals, if they changed at all, and why. And we ultimately want to make sure that if we are going to be planning for new people, for new development, for new businesses, that we're doing it in the most equitable, fair way that assures that people of East Boston have always a home in East Boston, and we're welcoming to newcomers as well. So, I'm excited to have this conversation, very likely via Zoom, unlike at the Umana the last time we had it. But I do invite all of you to come to the Plan East Boston meeting and hearing to discuss updates and also concerns during this process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the second late file? Would any Councillors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor to the second late file? Madam Clerk, please add Councillor Arroyo, Councillor Bach, Councillor Braden, Councillor Savi George, Councillor Flaherty, Councillor Flynn, Councillor Mejia. Please add the Chair's name, and Councillor Wu. And the second late-file matter will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We are now moving on to the green sheets. Would anybody wish to remove a matter from the green sheets? If so, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, the consent agenda is next. I've been informed by the Clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All of those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. Moving right along to announcements. Would anybody like to make an announcement? I'm going in alphabetical order. I don't see who did it first, so we're going to start now with the District Councillor from Beacon Hill, Councillor Bach. Counsel Bach, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you so much, Council O'Malley. I wanted to make an announcement on two fronts. One is that the last matter of the Consent Agenda is an item from both me and President O'Malley, a resolution congratulating Michelle Goldberg and PJ McCaw on their recent marriage. And I know that the whole council joins in this congratulation. Michelle does an amazing job on the central staff side, shepherding the budget process through, and then so much else throughout the year, you know? And I think she's, she's got many things that will make her a wonderful partner in marriage. You know, she's a great listener and very positive and solutions oriented, has a wonderful sense of humor, and is just very kind and a good person. So PJ's very lucky now to call himself her husband. And since one of her other qualities is good judgment, I'm sure that she is also very fortunate. But I just wanted to express my congratulations and the council's congratulations to Michelle, who's such an important part of our community. So that was my first announcement, and my second one was, you know, as somebody who's honored to represent a large Jewish community in District Eight, I feel I would be remiss not to acknowledge that starting tonight for 25 hours is Yom Kippur, the most sacred fast of the Jewish year. And it's really a moment of stocktaking, of the righting of wrongs, and in particular, the repairing of relationships. And it's something that has been very important for me from an interfaith perspective in my spiritual life, growing up with a bunch of Jewish friends. And so I just wanted to wish all of our Jewish residents in the City of Boston an easy fast, and also that they might be sealed in the Book of Life. So, thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Council Bach. Chair recognizes the District Council from Austin-Brighton. Counsel Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. Yesterday, in the afternoon, we all gathered at the Hero Square on Mapleton Street and Market in Brighton to receive home the remains of First Lieutenant Thomas J. Redgate. He was born in 1926. He grew up in Brighton. He served in World War II. He served in Korea in 1950 and was missing in action in 1950. The Department of War Department issued a presumptive finding of death in 1953, and in April of last year, his remains were positively identified through DNA testing. And we dedicated a Veterans Day Hero Square for him last Veterans Day in November. And yesterday, he came home, and it was a very emotional moment as we stood to welcome him back. And he, there'd be a celebration of his memorial mass tomorrow and burial at Bourne National Cemetery on Friday. So I just wanted to honor his sacrifice. Secondly, another, on the early morning hours of Labor Day, there was a fire on Persia Road in Brighton, and a young man named Zach Thomas Thompson, age 23, from Oxford, Connecticut, was visiting his girlfriend when the fire broke out. And he pushed her to safety, threw a window out onto the roof of a porch. And he went in, back into the room for some reason, and he didn't, he didn't survive. And he died, the residents of the house had only moved in two days earlier, and it was a very tragic reminder of just how quickly a life can end. So I wanted to express our condolences to his family, his friends, and his loved ones. A profound sadness is the loss of this, this young life. And also incredible gratitude to the first responders who were on the team, on the scene very quickly. The ladder 51 from Oak Square was on the scene within minutes. They were able to get a ladder, just run and grab a ladder and get up to that porch roof and rescue the young woman from the roof and bring her to safety. Unfortunately, they weren't able to save Zach. And I just want to say, great gratitude and thanks to Boston Fire Department and the Boston EMS. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you very much, Council Braden. Chair recognizes the at-large Council from Dorchester. Counsel Anissa Asabi George, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize a few weeks ago, the passing of Jimmy Hayes, who's a young man from Dorchester. And on behalf of myself, Council Baker, and Council Flaherty especially, I know, and I think maybe others, Counsel Flynn, attended the wake service and the funeral service that was well-attended. He was a, started his hockey career, I'm sure like many of our, us or our children have, very young on skates, probably. You know, my boys started skating long before they could do much else, and was a teammate for Dorchester Youth Hockey, went to Boston College, eventually played for the Blackhawks, the Panthers, the Devils, and the Boston Bruins. So just want to note his passing. It's a tremendous loss to the community and to hockey fans and hockey mothers, if I do say so everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Chair now recognizes the at-large Council from South Boston. Counsel Michael Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Counsel Flynn and I, and all the Boston City Council, offer our condolences to the Tinland family. Tom Tinland, who served as the city's Commissioner of Transportation. His dad passed away, 40-year teams with Local 25, and upon retirement, went right to work over at Fenway Park, working the beer stand. So it's a, he was a great guy, and obviously, the Tinland family, as all of us know, are very well-liked and well-respected, not only in our community of South Boston, but across the city. So our condolences to the entire Tinland family for the passing of Tom Tinland, Commissioner Tinland's dead.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Chair now recognizes the District Council from South Boston. Counsel Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to highlight a, an event that took place on Sunday at Medal of Honor Park in South Boston. It was the 40th anniversary, the rededication of the South Boston Vietnam Veterans Memorial. It was an unbelievable day. It was, it was a time to recognize and honor those young men from South Boston that lost their lives in Vietnam. There were many Gold Star families there, and they're still grieving, they're still in pain, they still miss their sons. Their sons never were able to grow up and have families like we've had, and have children and have grandchildren and coach Little League or coach dancing or be active in their neighborhood. But these men that did come back from South Boston built the first Vietnam Veterans Memorial in the country to honor those that paid the supreme sacrifice for our country. And many of my colleagues were there, Counsel Baker, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Asabi George were there with the state legislators and Congressman Lynch. So we just want to say that we will always remember and honor our veterans that paid the supreme sacrifice for our country and our Gold Star families as well. The second, second story I'd like to highlight is the Medal of Honor recipients themselves actually had their national convention in Boston last week. And it was an exceptional event. I had the opportunity to attend a few events with, with many, with many residents. This is the fourth time they've come to Boston in 20 years, and they, they love coming to Boston because Boston really treats them well. Boston understands the sacrifice that they've made and their families have made. So they wanted to let me know to thank the residents of Boston for being so gracious and so welcoming to them and their families. So we do hope that they're able to come back again to Boston and to visit our city once again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. Chair now recognizes the at-large Council from Dorchester. Counsel Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to acknowledge that earlier today, we held a small reception downstairs in the missile level to thank city leaders and community activists who have been working alongside our office to respond to COVID. And I think the theme was really about partnerships and what it takes for all of us across different spaces to, to respond to this crisis. And so we had partners from different organizations that we've worked with, community groups, and funders who really leaned in to support folks during this time. And I think that COVID did teach us a lot about ourselves. It, it helped us remember that at the end of the day, we are a village, and if everyone comes together, we can all move forward. And so these folks have done an exceptional job in getting us there. And so just wanted to acknowledge the folks that we, we shouted out today. So we had folks from the Tufts Family, excuse me, Tufts Health Plan, Senior Care. We worked alongside them to help feed our elders. Obviously, everybody knows the Black Boston COVID Coalition and their fierce leadership in making sure that everyone had access to testing and vaccination, and folks of diverse backgrounds were not left out of that conversation in holding us as a city accountable to culturally competent outreach. So big shout out to the Black Boston COVID Coalition, the Determined Divas, which is a civic engagement volunteer-led group that really leaned in to help us identify families to support. Chris Malde Vasquez Casado, who worked with us on our youth vaccination activation efforts, as well as our efforts to feed some of our most vulnerable communities. Monica Cannon Grant, who you all know, did a tremendous job early on during the early days of COVID and making sure that families had access to food. Vito Casado from the Boston Foundation, and really looking to support work that was community-driven. Jeanne Matos from the Madison Park Development Corp., and alongside with Pamela Lyons, both worked alongside our office to ensure that the issues of mental health and wellness, specifically for young people, were front and center during this time and really created space for young people to really understand the social isolation that they were experiencing and creating space for us to be able to engage them in this work. So to all the community organizations that have worked with us and continue to do so, we just wanted to acknowledge them publicly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Mejia. As Chair, I'd like to make two brief announcements, one somber, the other celebratory. Sombre, of course, last Saturday, September 11th, marked the 20th anniversary since the September 11th attacks of 2001. As someone who was in Washington, DC at the time, it, on one hand, seems like it was yesterday, and of course, it was a generation ago. So of course, the council, in our closing in memory of all those whom we lost on that day. The celebratory note that I just want to acknowledge, and I can do this as the longest continuous-serving member who's been here for three mayoral elections, all of whom involve members of this body, I just wanted to acknowledge the incredible talent, grit, dedication of the members of this body. Acting Mayor Kim Janey, Counsel Andrea Campbell, Counsel at Large Anissa Asabi George, and Counsel at Large Michelle Wu. You are all a credit to our city. Congratulations. Thank you for running, and all the best. Congrats. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Baker, you were in the queue as well. Chair recognizes the District Council from Dorchester.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along some lines, thank you for acknowledging Jimmy, Jimmy Hayes. That was a big loss in Dorchester. Thank you for acknowledging September 11th. That was a big loss for all of us. That was actually an election day that day. Not for me, but I was heavily involved in election that day, and it was, do we stop knocking on doors? Do we stop campaigns? So that was definitely a day that changed my life. And the third thing was also something that you had touched on. Michelle, congratulations. Anissa, congratulations. And Counsel Campbell, and Counsel President Acting Mayor Kim Janey, thank them also for being able to just put their name on the ballot and get out there. We all know how hard that is. With that being said, Mass and Cass is now yours now. We need to make some serious decisions down there. If we look at this as a woman's issue, it's the women that are suffering the most down there. It's the women that are in the, in the tents being raped. It's the women that are being put out on the street by the men that they're there with. It's the women that are mail ticket for these, for these women. They're the ones that are suffering the most. It's a woman's issue. We have plans. We have assets. We can take care of it. But you're going to need to make decisions. So, thank you. And congratulations, both of you. I mean that from my heart.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Baker. Any other announcements? Seeing none. We are going to now move to the adjournment of our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, Thomas Brown and Mary Marie Caruso. I'm sorry, please rise if you are able, and I'll read that again. For Counsel Baker, we're closing in memory of Thomas Brown and Mary Marie Caruso. For Counsel Bach, Maddie Spencer. For Counsel Braden, Zach Thompson. For Counsel Campbell, Helen Barrett. Sherman Evans. For Counselors Flaherty, Flynn, on behalf of the entire council, Tom Tinland Senior. For the Chair, Thomas M. Donahue, Orestes Dimitriades, and Norm McDonald. For Counselor Flynn, Man Ho Chan. And on behalf of the entire council, U.S. Marine Sergeant Johani Rosario Pichardo, James Jimmy Hayes, Dr. David Jones, and all those whom we lost on September 11, 2001. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals and is scheduled to meet again in the IONELA Chamber next Wednesday, September 22, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is hereby adjourned.